Township Council Meeting of September 21st, 2021 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing a notice in the office of a township clerk, and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 18th, 2020, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record and the Newark Star-Ledger on December 22nd, 2020, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio stations on December 18th, 2020. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays, and are also available for viewing at www.parcippany.net. Would you all join me in a flag salute?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indiscernible with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Grignani?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. DePiro?
Here.
Okay, in attendance are Mayor Michael Soriano, Jim Lot, Township Clerk Khaled Madden. Excused absences are Fred Carr, Juan Uribe, and Paul Carify. Council President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, October 5th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, agenda meeting, and October 19th, 2021 at 7:00 PM, regular meeting. Okay, Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. So, this weekend, recycling will be returning to Parsippany on Saturday, September 25th. The recycling center will be open from 8:00 AM to 1:45 this Saturday on Pump House Road, just down the road from the Police Department. Now, after reviewing the budget constraints, the Public Works Department made the recommendation to close the weekend recycling for this past Saturday, the 18th. It was a difficult decision to make. We know how much closing the recycling center on Saturdays impacts the residents, especially when you're working Monday to Friday, and it's difficult for you to get to the recycling center weekdays at 7:00 in the morning. I know that for a fact because I had to be at work by 7:00 in the morning weekdays, and I was working Saturdays, so I couldn't get rid of stuff myself back in the day. So, it's tough. Now, I know how much personally it impacts residents, how difficult it makes it. But making fiscally responsible decisions, they're not easy, and they're not popular, even if when they are the right decisions to make. Now, there was concern that keeping the recycling center open on Saturday could result in deeper financial consequences based on early budget speculations, but finances now assured us that this won't be the case. I want to thank our incredible sanitation crews for continuing to go above and beyond to support our township through these very challenging times. We are incredibly grateful for all their hard work. Now, we're not afraid of sharing this. We want people to know that we're currently hiring positions at the Department of Public Works. Like many municipalities, like many businesses, we are suffering a labor shortage as well, which it's being, you know, it makes the problem even worse. So, many of these positions can become permanent with municipal benefits. To find out how you can join the DPW and make a difference in our town, call 973-263-7273. Okay?
The number is up here if you want to write it down later.
There you go. So, COVID-19 cases as of today, total number of cases in Parsippany stands at 4,649. That's an increase of 54 new cases in the past week. Now, 81% of all eligible Parsippany residents have had at least one shot. People fully vaccinated, 75% of all eligible residents are fully vaccinated at this point. 97% of people over the age of 65 are fully vaccinated. 97% of seniors in this township are fully vaccinated. That's an amazing number. We are very lucky here in Morris County, especially in Parsippany. There will be a hazardous waste disposal event Saturday, September 25th, from 9:00 to 2:00 PM at the Morris County Public Safety Training Academy at 500 West Hanover Avenue. For questions, call 973-285-8390, or email info@mcma.com. Coffee with a Cop returns to Valley Bank this Tuesday, September 28th, from 10:00 to 12:00. Join officers from the Parsippany Police Department, and RSVP is required. Valley Bank is located at 800 Route 46 West in the Arlington Plaza. For more information, call 973-263-0601. This Saturday, we're doing something special, and I'm inviting all members of council to this, most especially Council President. On Saturday, September 25th, at 11:00 AM, the Township of Parsippany will present a street dedication at Scott Place in Mount Tabor in honor of Robert Ernest Sippi, or Sipe. He was killed in action during Vietnam War on September 23rd, 1967. I will be joined by family members of Specialist Five Sipes' family, along with a representative from Piketini Arsenal, and other guests. The event will be livestreamed. The Township of Parsippany Troy Hills also seeks to honor township residents who were wartime veterans through the dedication of municipal roads. We are looking for those that are, gave their life for the ultimate sacrifice to protect this nation. By adding names of local veterans to public street signs, the township hopes to show appreciation for their outstanding contributions and service to our nation as members of the United States Armed Forces. FEMA, there is FEMA public assistance available for Morris County after Hurricane Ida. You know, the President approved a major federal disaster declaration, DR 4614, for counties in the state of New Jersey. The funding expanded recently to include Morris County. Federal assistance is available to eligible individuals and families affected by the disaster. Information is available right here, or you can go to www.fema.gov backslash disaster backslash 4614. I would like to call Patty Taylor. Up to the microphone, please. There are some things that go beyond party, and beyond partisanship, and that is service. And I am, that is something I am proud to recognize here in the township. And I would like to read this proclamation into the record. Whereas the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills honors the late William C. Taylor Jr. as an extraordinary example of a man who dedicated his life to public service in his township, state, and country. And whereas we commend his service with United States Marine Corps, where he was a decorated marksman, sniper, he also served as military police onboard the USS Springfield from 1962 to 1967. He was honorably discharged with the rank of corporal. And whereas he served his community elected to the Township Council, serving from 1981 to 1983, and was president and liaison on the Township Planning Board. He was the president of the Par-Troy Little League West, and took great pride in building all the baseball fields located there. He was a proud small business owner of the Texaco Station in Parsippany from 1975 to 1985, from which he donated the chain link fence that surrounds Parsippany Hills High School. And whereas William also served on the Republican Committee for his district for a number of years, he was the Director of Government Affairs at Tramwell Crow, where he designed the Mazda Brook Development on Smith Road. He also owned his own construction company from which he proudly built over 200 homes here in Parsippany. Now, therefore, I, Michael Soriano, Mayor of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, do hereby dedicate this plaque, which is out in the hallway, in honor and present this proclamation on behalf of residents of Parsippany Troy Hills as a token of respect and admiration for William C. Taylor Jr., and urge the residents of our community to follow his example of service and accomplishment, dated the 21st day of September, 2021. Congratulations. Let's get the family, let's get the family. Come on. Fight.
Not going to be enough room up there.
Go ahead, go ahead.
You'll stand in front, it'll be fine.
We all have to stand in front of them.
Yeah, I'm going to need some people on this side.
Sure, we're in, sure, we're in the front.
Mic from Alex, right here. There you go.
I just did an extra, because he looks tall.
Okay, we're going to take a moment, go into the hallway, and reveal the plaque. Anyone that wishes to join us, county members, please feel free. Yeah, there we go.
Hi, Bill, in 1981.
You're on the record. Wait, actually, yeah, wait. When I tell you, pull it off. Okay, are we ready?
I'm not ready.
Okay. Two, three. In memory of Councilman William C. Taylor Jr., November 4th to 1981 to December 31st, 1983. Congratulations to the family.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, friend.
Good.
You want to come back in?
Yeah. You've done enough of those, right? She's paid her dues, Michael, come on.
Mr. Council President, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I said, you know, I think my plaque's moving. Finally, he's going to be closer to the door. He'll be, he'll be up a little bit closer. Wonder what he's going to do.
I didn't realize how many were missing on the wall. He would have enjoyed that.
I said to him, I was looking at the nearest thing. He said, oh, it's close, it's in the room.
Okay, just some anecdotes about Bill. In 1981, when we ran for the Town Council, Bill, myself, and Dottie Jerkle ran for council, Frank Perry ran for mayor. We, starting January, we knocked on 17,000 doors during that campaign. We actually literally wore out two pair of shoes. And right up to election night, Frank still wanted to keep going. Now, Bill did not like dogs. Any house we got to, when we opened the, opened the gate, and there was a, dogs barking at through the windows, you know, he would turn around and go back to the car. One time, one time, there was a chain link fence, there was a six or seven or an eight foot chain link fence, and there's a big beware of dogs sign on the chain link fence. Frank liked to be the first one in, knock on a door and talk because he, he liked to do the most talking, hogged the conversation. So, he always wanted to be at the door first. I was always parking the car, so I was always last. So, Frank didn't see the sign, and he just barged through the chain link fence, and he's running up to the house. Bill gets through the gate, and this big dog, the size of a pony, comes galloping around from the back of the house. Bill takes two steps back and holds the gate closed. Frank is running back to the, and he's trying to get out, and Bill's not opening that gate for, for nothing. And finally, when the dog reached Frank, turned out to be a friendly dog, he, he got up on his hind paws, on Frank's nice clean jacket, too muddy paws prints on there. The dog was about a foot taller when he was up on his hind legs, and just licked Frank. So, it was, was not a vicious one. We got, we got to another house, it had a screen door on it, and the dog was barking and snarling and drooling, and when he finally, we're waiting for someone to answer the bell besides the dog, the dog stopped barking, so I kicked the screen door, and he started barking again, and Bill's going, cut that out, cut that out. We, we had lots of fun times when we were, when we were campaigning. I enjoyed serving with Bill. Dottie Jerkle, we kept trying to, she walked very slow, so she was, we could do twice as many houses if she would just stay in the car and say, there's Dottie Jerkle, Dottie would wave from, from the car window, you know, and we could cover more houses that way. But I miss him. He was, he was a lot of fun, lot of jokes, always the Marine, couldn't take the, couldn't take the Marine out of him.
As it was, he didn't hide any.
That's right. Once a Marine, always a Marine. And he lived by that motto. We enjoyed him, but I'm glad to see he's got his due recognition now. To the Taylor family, very nice to see you all. Okay, now you can leave before we start the meeting.
Had enough meetings.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Good night. Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Catch you later.
Okay, anybody from the Town Council have anything to offer? How about Township Attorney?
I have closed session items as indicated on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lot. Business Administrator? Nothing. You're supposed to speak up, this is a...
I'm not the Business Administrator.
Oh, the Administrator's not here. Who's going to cover, anybody?
He, no report for him.
No report?
Yeah.
All right, Township Clerk, I'm sorry.
Uh, no report, Council President, thank you, sir.
Any Township Office and Committee reports?
No.
No correspondence?
No.
This is going to be a nice short meeting. Okay, bids taken. October 26th, 21, Craftsman Farms, Log House, Kitchen Restoration, and Annex Rehabilitation. That's the one where a big tree fell through the roof. May I, I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion, second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
The floor is open to the public on any matter.
You have five minutes. Come in, sign your name, state your name and address.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Jason Cleffy, the owner of Jacob Towing.
Yes. Mr. Cleffy, can you just speak into the mic a little bit?
Jason Cleffy, owner of Jacob Towing, how are you? Sign in.
You could sign in after if you'd like.
Oh, it's brighter.
Hi, good evening. I'm Paul Argent, and like last time I spoke here, I'm going to ask Council President for an American Disabilities Accommodation.
Paul, before you begin, after you're done speaking, if you can just sign in, please.
Yes.
And if you can also speak...
You have five minutes.
Do I have that accommodation?
For five minutes, you do.
On April 5th, 2019, the Attorney General of New Jersey issued a general biased incident investigation standards to serve as recognition that the unique nature of suspected or confirmed biased incidents requires special handling by the New Jersey law enforcement community. Although the Chief of Police is required to create a media release, the Mayor or the Chief of Police cannot and should not tamper with or withhold evidence to knowingly misuse the town's Public Information Office, which according to New Jersey statute is a crime with tampering with evidence and corruption of public resources. It is alleged that not only did the Mayor purposely supply wrong information for his own illegal purposes and personal political gain, but by doing so, it became a biased incident or a hate crime in and of itself against the white people employed at a Jacob Towing. The Ku Klux Klan Act of 1871 forbids any race, including the white people, from being discriminated against. And the white people at a Jacob Towing, who have been receiving death threats daily, feel they are victims of a biased hate crime by the Mayor of Parsippany, New Jersey. And according to the New Jersey Attorney General's own standards, the Morris County Prosecutor's Office was asked today to determine if the Mayor's actions should be considered a biased incident or not, hopefully within the next 24 hours. Today, a Jacob Towing not only realized that they are caught in an unwarranted political storm in Parsippany, New Jersey, but that they feel that they, the white people, that is, employees at a Jacob Towing, are indeed victims of racism or racial profiling by the Mayor of Parsippany in conspiracy with the acting Chief of Police. The Mayor and the Chief of Police knowingly lied and tampered with evidence in their August 18, 2021 press release. Now, the white people at a Jacob Towing, who were on duty that day of August 16th, told the police today that they themselves feel that they are being racially profiled. Last time I was here, I specifically gave council notice of an appeal of the towing contract. Your attorney was derelict in refusing to either schedule or hear or direct council to do that. He then went on and proceeded to give us legal advice, and I want your attorney to know, regardless of his after emails trying to cover up with our attorneys that he did indeed give us legal advice, it is hereby rejected. Within 24 hours or so of the Attorney General's Office...
Excuse me, you have one more minute.
...within 24 hours or so of the Attorney General's Office giving the Chief of Police notice of whether the alleged crimes are biased or not, this town is required to do a press release, and we're asking that that press release be given with truthful information, not tampered information. For your information, the press release that the Mayor submitted through the Public Information Office, he was already told 24 hours prior that there was no hate crime because there was no crime. And this council should be noticed that a Jacob Towing is our victims of crimes by this Mayor and the Chief of Police, and it rises to a level in accordance with the Ku Klux Klan Act of 1871 and the April 5th, 2019 Order of the Attorney General that we have equal justice rights to.
That means time is up.
Thank you.
Council President?
Mr. Lot?
I gave you no legal advice, you're not my client, you posed a question to the, to Mayor and Council, you alleged criminal activity, I told you to report it to the Prosecutor's Office.
We gave you notice of an appeal, you failed to give the council notice that to either hear the appeal or schedule the appeal. We are again, for the fourth time, giving you notice of an appeal. In the tow truck rules, it specifically states that any sanctions given by the Chief of Police, the appeal is heard by Town Council. Town Council, I asked you to do your job. Schedule or hear an appeal.
Okay, thank you. No. I'm going to save you a lot of time? No. Okay? Thank you for coming.
Know what? What does that mean?
Go sit down, you're done.
What does that mean? Don't tell me to sit down.
I just did. Your five minutes are up. Jason can speak now. You're done.
You gave a notice of an appeal.
I would like a notice of appeal.
You should have your attorney contact me.
I don't need an attorney for an appeal.
You should have your attorney contact me, you're represented by council.
I, I'm not. I need an appeal, that's all I'm asking for is appeal.
You're represented by council, I have a letter from him saying he represents a Jacob, and he told me as soon as he was finished vacation, he would contact me.
Not for the appeal.
I don't have it in writing.
I'm trying to resolve this, I'm trying to go back and conduct business. My business and my employees are a victim for seven hours of an individual that came in and tormented people. If I sat here for seven hours in front of all you guys and tormented yous, would you appreciate it? No.
Mr. Cleffy, into the mic.
I've been in business almost 30 years.
Mr. Cleffy, into the mic, please.
I've been in business almost 30 years. I don't need to be tormented and threatened every day on my phone. Yous wouldn't like it, if you had small children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleffy.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Good evening.
All right, good. Um, I'll take my glasses off for this part, when I have to read, I'll put them back on. You know, over the course of the past few weeks, I, you know, some political ads go out, and some things go out, and you read them. There was one in particular that I caught my eye, was from the Mayor, of course, with regards to my corrupt practices with using surplus. Well, I want to remind the Mayor that you also use surplus, and used a lot more of it in the course of those three years that you, prior to your depleting the surplus. So, my point is this, I used it, and I have, and I replenished it, but that's beside the point. But I would like to also go on, I don't know if you guys reviewed the audit or the township budget yet? Well, I know you got the budget late, but I, I...
That will be on our October meeting.
Okay, I reviewed, I reviewed it, and I also reviewed the audit. And I have to tell you something, you guys are operating in a deficit right now. You're operating in a deficit because you're over expended in 2020. You spent more money than you had. That's right, right in details, right, right in the audit. Can't miss it. You over expended the appropriations, not you, but the Mayor, because you approved the budget, and the Mayor spends. So, that part of the budget has been overspent in 2020. You're actually in a def, like I said, an operating deficit. Practically, the town is bankrupt. And it was bankrupt due to spending. You know, when I left office in 2017, I was proud of my record. I left this administration with $23 million in surplus. In less than three years' time, it's pretty much all gone. It's all gone. You're talking to current fund, the water utility, and the sewer utility. And the shoe, and, and when you, when you look at that, they have nothing. And another concern you should have is the fact, when I left in 2017, you had $109 million in authorized debt. Now you have almost close to $184 million in authorized debt. Debt has increased significantly. Your bond rating is going to go down next year, no doubt about it. You're over expended, you're, I mean, you're overestimated your, your revenues for this year, so next year, you're going to, we're going to get killed. It's that simple. I've been reading this budget, and especially this audit report, you have a lot of concerns going for it. And the town is bankrupt. What you got this year is a political special dispensation, most likely coming from the Governor's Office. Because I have never heard of a local finance... Because I have never heard of a local finance board doing what they, I mean, uh, DCA doing what they did. If you would've canceled those appropriations, considering you over expended the appropriations in this year's, in twenty-twenty budget, forget it, you can't, it would've been even worse for next year. My point, my point is this. It's real simple. This budget, this town has been mismanaged for four years. Four years mismanaged. And it's so simple for you to point the finger at everybody else and not take any responsibility, because that's what leaders do. You take responsibility. When I made mistakes, I admitted it. It's that simple. But that being said, you guys got a long haul. I mean, I don't even know what the orders are gonna say, but I can see it, I can see the audit report, I see the appropriations were overspent in all the departments.
Excuse me, you have one minute.
Huh?
I have one minute.
Oh, I have one minute, okay. I got bad hearing, sorry, Jess.
I don't hear the mayor.
So that being said, I, I, I'm gonna stay here, because I'm sure the mayor wants to respond. So I'll have that one minute and I want to respond back. Unless you don't want to respond.
Do you think?
Don't, don't hush me away.
No, do you think, say whatever you want.
You know, don't, don't do that, man, because that's disrespectful.
Say, no, meaning say what you want.
I, I'm wait, I, I said I'm done, I'm gonna wait, I got-
That's not how this works.
I know, I know, I know Robert's rules, bully man, I know them pretty well.
Not, not actually.
Oh, oh, not accurate, okay. So, go ahead, mayor, you can say something, I'll stay right here, like, I won't say nothing, but I don't have to go sit.
I will just say this. This is not the place for this. We have a debate coming up, this is, this is politics and this is you running for office. This is not doing governance, so-
No, 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 this is the place for it.
Is this time up?
Yeah.
This is the place for it, mayor.
Thank you.
And you know, you know what a debate should be? In public, not behind a computer. That's what a debate should be.
Sure. See you at Puddingstone.
Anyone else wish to speak? Come on, Nick. We're looking around.
Nick Homiak, twenty-six oh-nine, Lake Hiawatha. Hey, if you're white, you're right. If you're brown, stick around, if you're black, get back. I think we just had the Ku Klux Klan up here at the microphone. White guys uh, being discriminated against, wow, I mean, where's the Confederate flag? Jesus. Anyway, uh, the Board of Education people have been coming here because of this election and they've been talking about the budget and attacking the mayor from the budget. Now, if we go a little blast from the past, I remember referendum in this town, people, I think over seventy percent of the people said, "We don't want artificial turf." What does the Board of Education do? Uh, no, they were gonna use open space money for an artificial, uh, turf. So it got voted down. I think that was Mayor Barbario's idea. And then, a couple of years later, lo and behold, we're getting artificial turf. But where'd the money come from? Originally, it was supposed to be seven million, then it was two million, now, then it was four million. But the Board of Education found the money somewhere, where, where did that money come from? But it went toward what people didn't want, so it shows the Board of Education in this town, among others, do not respect the public, the voters, majority said, "No, they don't want it." And it also shows that the Board of Education in this town apparently lack, lacks an ecological paradigm to use open space money for artificial turf. Your own Board of Education in this town, I mean, come on. Then we had the Aurora Security Fiasco, Mr. Inglecino, where did all that money go? And all the frivolous lawsuits with Karifi, where did all that money go? The promise in front of hundreds of people that Waterview wouldn't be developed, it was developed anyway. And we gave the developer over four million dollars for a buffer called Open Space. That was all with the Barbario administration. So, and our water and sewer, a public trust. Water has been a public trust since Roman times. But it was used to patch up the budget. And then, lo and behold, the infrastructure is deteriorating, we have the entropy, it's, uh, needs to be repaired, and what do we, we don't have anything in the cupboard. We have a water deficit, four wells down, pumps, motors, all that money was supposed to be held in trust for that. It's gone. I don't believe that there's as much money in, in, in anything that Mayor Barbario alleges unless he can prove it in, in black and white, I, I just don't believe it. But they, to say that this mayor is responsible for running the town to the ground, I mean, I just, I just find it hard to believe, coming from the source that it, that it's uh, coming from. And not only did Waterview, uh, did we give a kickback to the developer after the people in this town were promised, grassroots people, also showed they don't care what the people, the people filling the auditoriums. Couple of people wanted the development, of course. And then they didn't even hire union, the unions to do it. And we probably damaged our aquifer, because that was some of the best soil and, and that was a, a, uh, a prime groundwater, one of the best we had left here in Parsippany. The, uh, last of the hills of Troy. Destroyed for a senseless development, another mall. And then, all right, I'll land a UPS pilot deal.
Nick, you have one minute.
All right, we need tax ratables in this town, what do we give UPS a pilot deal for? The answer? John Inglecino is running this town, not Mayor Barbario. And I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing no one else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. Grignani, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Second reading and public hearing, ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon seventeen, establishing white collar salary ranges. The notice of this ordinance, twenty-twenty-one colon seventeen, was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on August twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and introduced at the August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon seventeen, be heard in their second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Public hea- motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon seventeen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on this matter only, seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon seventeen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now therefore, it be resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that the notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. McCarthy, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen, amending chapter four oh-five, Vehicles and Traffic, Section twenty-one, One Way Streets, on the code of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The notice for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on August the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and introduced at the August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting. Motion to accept ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen, to be heard in their second and final reading by title only, only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only, seeing no one.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Ms., um, Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now therefore, be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon eighteen.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Grignani, seconded by Ms. Peterson, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two, bond ordinance providing for various improvements to the sewer utility in and by the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, and the county of Morris, New Jersey appropriating five million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand dollars therefor, and authorizing the issuance of five million, seven hundred thirty-four thousand dollars of bonds or notes of the township to finance the cost thereof. The notice for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-one, and introduced at the September seventh, twenty-twenty-one agenda meeting. Motion to accept twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two, be heard in their second and final reading by title only.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is open on this ordinance only.
Uh, Nick Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. Can it be explained in brief exactly what these, uh, sewer utility improvements, uh, compromise or, uh, compose of? If you, um-
Nick? Uh, next week, um, the business administrator will return from his, uh, time. He'll, um, he'll try to get back to you Tuesday, Wednesday, is that all right?
Sure.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call. Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Floor is closed.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and a hearing held thereon. Now therefore, it be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the resolution above for ordinance twenty-twenty-one colon twenty-two.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Peterson, seconded by Ms., um, McCarthy, roll call, Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.